Yes.
Did you start already?
Uh, we're not quite.
Yeah. Did you know that there's a AKV group coming over Skeetow into Lake County?
I didn't, I am not aware of that.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at four o'clock. Can I get a roll call of our members that are present? Do you do that or do I do that?
I can do it for you.
Well, I can do it. Okay, um, Marcella is absent. Larry?
Here.
I'm here. Tate? Markham?
Yes. Hello?
Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Staff asked nothing.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the movement we're favoring? You cut out real badly.
Oh, um, we're approving the agenda.
Oh, okay. Are we gonna approve the minutes?
The, it's agenda first on the, on the agenda.
Alright.
So are you okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Next, um, we have the approval of the minutes from the meeting on 4/25/24. Does anybody have, or do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Sure, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Let Larry have it come on as a second.
You can be second, okay. Is there any further discussion of changes or anything like that?
That would look good.
Okay, hearing none, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you good, Larry?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay. Didn't hear it, sorry. Okay, um, doesn't look like we have any old business to discuss. We have new business today. This is file number 24-266663, Smuggler variance request. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you so much. Um, if there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and let the applicant present the file this evening first, and then staff will present comments and, um, a summary afterwards. So if, with no objection, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Glenn and let him go ahead and present his file.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
Sure.
And bring it up. So, today I'm asking for zoning variance to allow me to bring my cabin into compliance with the backcountry regulations. I'm the owner of the cabin. I've owned it since 2004. And, um, it does not have an occupancy certificate. And that's what I'm trying to get, uh, the cabin in compliance with, is what I'm trying to do. So if you would, I'm looking for, yeah, so that's what I'm looking for. It was built in 1994, 1993, 1994 by Dennis and another lady, I forget her name, Bowman. And then was sold to Kevin and Denise Sitsi, I believe.
Sista.
Who, uh, uh, lived in it, uh, at least full-time, as far as I know, for approximately a year before we bought it. Uh, he ran a bakery here in town and commuted back and forth up there. And had two small children up there that I'm amazed at. But, uh, uh, they went bankrupt, we purchased it. And at the time, we did not know that it didn't have an occupancy certificate. And so that's what I'm trying to rectify with this, uh, variance. So, the, the variance request specifically is the cabin is too high for the backcountry regulations. It's approximately 24 feet with a, with a 12 by 12, uh, 45-degree curved roof. Um, cabin floor space is, by my measurements inside, is about 595, but county records show about 650 on the external dimensions. And then it does have a loft. County records, again, 254 square feet. It's above the, it's above the, uh, allowed square footage for a backcountry structure. This is a picture of the cabin, as you can see, you know, it's, it's up, uh, St. Kevan Way. It's on the, the Shingle Mill Gulch is where it is. And we tried hard to try to maintain the character of it. It has a, it has a green roof, metal roof, you know, it blends in with the, with the landscape, in my opinion. And, you know, it's completely off-grid, right? There's, there's nothing here. We have a, a small solar system that we have. We have a composting toilet, has no water source up there. So we, we've held water up for the past 20 years when we've used it. And we've accessed it for the past 20 years, both summer and winter, um, to it. And to, to access it, it's a, uh, high clearance four-wheel drive in the summers, snowmobile. Next slide. I think I covered, I think I covered all of this. But again, just another picture of the cabin that you see, uh, as it exists today. I'm trying to show you where it's at, thanks for getting the bigger map. But, as you can see, if you look at the, the arrow, um, in the, in the center left there, that's the cabin location around it in relationship to, to Turquoise Lake. I'll zoom in here so you keep seeing it. So if you zoom in again, here's the actual property that you have. It's 9.9 acres. And then here's, the, the dimensions are approximate, I want to be really clear. I just did it off of Google, you know, trying to measure it. But, uh, you can see the cabin in red, uh, that's, that's there with the green roof. I kinda drew one there myself, the access road that, that is there. And that's a old mining road that's been there since 1890s, uh, is the access road there. And, um, um, there's the, there's the creek off to the left, right around where the number 300 is, that runs down, but that's off the property and there's no water source on the property. Nor do I have water rights for the property, you know, water rights for that. So, um, next, this is a picture of, kind of, the interior of the cabin, give you an idea, uh, around it. And, you know, what I'm asking for is the minimum variance necessary. I'm not asking actually for anything, any construction or anything. I'm simply asking for it to be, to be, uh, approved with the larger dimensions in the backcountry structure. And as you can see, it's really, um, a cabin that is designed not for full-time occupancy. In fact, I'd be very hesitant to advise you to say you should allow it to be full-time occupancy 'cause it's just not conducive to it way up in the, in the mountains, the way it is, and the amount of snow that it gets. But it's a very nice hunting cabin, vacation cabin, whatever you wanna call it, right? Backcountry cabin that you can go in and have it. And that's the way we've used it for the past 20 years, uh, around it. So, um, practical hardships. I did look, so, so the county asked me to do, uh, have a structural analysis done. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Colorado. I did a hundred-page structural analysis. My opinion, the cabin is structurally sound. But, if you would reduce the roof to an eight-by-12 pitch, 33-degree, um, you'd add 25 PSI snow load to the roof, and it would overload the foundation. And it would add basically 15,000 pounds of load onto the structure, and it wouldn't be able to handle it. And so, the only practical means of getting it into compliance with the backcountry regulations is to tear it down and build a new cabin. And I did some rough estimates, and in my evidence, it's gonna be $200,000 to $400,000 to, to rebuild it, depending upon, you know, what you get and the type of cabin that you do. In addition, uh, you know, to meet it, having me the, the, uh, single-family building structure, I, I'm supposed to have a water source in the well. There's no practical way to get a drilling rig up there unless I would completely redo the road across National Forest Service and multiple private owners' properties, which, um, in my opinion, isn't practical, you know, to do. Uh, or fly it in by helicopter, literally, that's the only ways that I could think of. The septic system, and, and again, what I'm hoping for is to get a variance. Talked with Bryce, and he said I might be able to put a holding tank in. You know, we generate, because there's no water source, right? We, we generate maybe five to 10 gallons of water a year up there. And he said, "Well, another property, they allowed to put in a holding tank and then allow it to be pumped out." And I figure I'd have to pump it every 20 to 50 years, um, before it would fill up. And so, but the, the, uh, soil up there is so permeable that I would have to haul approximately 110,000 pounds of sand to dig an eight-foot ditch and fill it four-foot deep with sand to be able to put in a septic system for five or 10 gallons of water a year. Right? So again, I'm hoping that, that with the backcountry, uh, if it's, if, if you allow it to be, to be brought in under the backcountry, then I could put in a more reasonable system. There's no black water up there, 'cause I have, I've had a composting toilet up there since, for the past 17 years, which works great, right? Now, if you had a family of four living up there full-time, I'm not sure the load on that would work as well. But for a temporary occupancy, I've never had to empty it. I was just up there this morning looking at it, and it's fine, you know, it decomposes. And, you know, again, for a, for a backcountry cabin, it works great. Next slide. Uh, impact on, on the neighbors. If you approve the variance, there's basically no impact on the, on the neighbors, 'cause I'm not asking for anything to be done. I'm not asking for construction or anything else. If you don't approve it, and I would tear it down, it would be a lot of traffic going up and down and then building another cabin. Again, as you can see from the pictures, it blends in with the landscape. I think it, in, in my opinion, it fits the spirit of the backcountry regulations quite well. But it was built, um, 25 years before the regulations were put in, and it doesn't meet them. Now, I did attend the hearings on the backcountry regulations, and I recommended that they be larger for my own self-interest, to try to get my cabin in there. But they weren't approved larger, they were approved at, at 600 square foot in, in the height limit, so. In the report, um, that was generated by the county there, the, the Lake County Conservation District had three concerns in there, so I thought I'd just address them. And Cece, thank you for sending that report, so I could put this slide in there. Uh, the first one was around wildlife. And in 20 years, at my property, I've only seen mice, squirrels, and birds. But hiking around that area in the national forest, if I, if I hike a couple miles away, I have seen evidence of elk and deer. I'm not a hunter, so I don't go up and hunt. But certainly there are some wildlife out there, but, but, um, I'm not sure, you know, I think the impact is minimal myself, but, um, the noxious weeds. The report said to create a noxious weed management plan. So for a private landowner, I'm not quite sure exactly what that means, but I would think, practically speaking, I looked up the noxious weeds in Lake County, and there's 34 in the list and 10 that are actually in Lake County. So what I'd recommend is taking the 10 that are in Lake County, printing out pictures of what they are, you know what I mean, laminate them, put them in, so you can put them in your backpack, and then walk the property, you know, once a year or whatever, and see if there's anything up there. And also, when you're hiking, then you could use that same thing to, uh, to look for it in other areas where there's more water and stuff, you know? And then report it or do whatever you're supposed to. I'm not exactly sure, um, what you're supposed to do when you find them, but I just reported to the county and sprayed it. And then, um, fire safety, there was an issue, uh, or concerns around fire safety. So, we do have a fire pit out there. Our recommendation is just remove the fire pit. We've probably used it a half a dozen times in 20 years. Um, so I have no issue with that. And then, you know, there's concern about embers coming from the fireplace, and there is a spark arrestor on the top of the, of the chimney stack that, you know, should help prevent or minimize the impact on the, on the, uh, the land. So, uh, with that, I just thought I'd show some pictures of my kids who have enjoyed it. Now, keep in mind, my son's now 32 and my daughter's 28. But, uh, you can see us up there, the cabin with the snowmobiles and them sledding and having fun up there. And then, I just threw this picture in the upper right-hand, to try to show you the depth of the snow, you know, that when you come up there in the middle of winter, how you have to shovel it down. If you remember, the first picture, it was three steps up into the cabin, and then you have to shovel to go down into the door. So it gets a lot of snow up there. And that's, that's my presentation.
Thank you so much. So, so some things that staff would mention, um, we're gonna be brief this evening. We feel that the staff report pretty much contains, um, all the information we'd like to share. However, um, the applicant's brought up some, um, you know, some nice elements that will become more relevant if the, the variance is granted when we go in the site plan review process. So the comments that have been provided by the Conservation, uh, Soil Conservation District will become, um, more applicable and things that we'll look at in more depth when, if and when we would go through the site plan review process. Really great to see the applicant be proactive and have some discussion about it now, since they were comments that we received now. But, basically, I would just like to share, um, I worked on the backcountry zoning creation for 10-plus years. Um, and I think it had been, worked on a dozen, well, I don't know, several years before, um, I started working on it. So there was a lot of thought that went into rezoning, uh, the largest rezoning, I believe, Lake County's ever done, uh, when we created the backcountry zoning. But one of the, um, thoughts that we had through the creation of the backcountry was that we identified that we had, and we continue to have, illegal structures that were built without building permits in the backcountry. And we thought that this would be a pathway forward in order to bring those into compliance, perhaps. We knew that we weren't gonna be able to land on standards that would address every single structure that exists and, and thus, a variance process would be an appropriate method, perhaps, to, um, look at those on a case-by-case basis. But, um, as the applicant has suggested, uh, in the creation and the intent of the backcountry is to allow modest temporarily occupied structures that would not be serviced by traditional septic systems or wells. Um, and we have a variance process cut out, uh, within the site plan review process and the, uh, backcountry structural license, where a variance can be granted for things such as compost, composting toilets and, and the like. So if the variance were to be granted on this, uh, property today, on the Smuggler, there's the pathway forward for the applicant then to move into the site plan review process, which is going to look at the environmental sensitivities of the area. Um, one thing that may come up in public comment, um, and, and something that we're very aware of is that, um, we do recognize that this is like an 1890s mining, uh, road that's been used, but it does cross private property. Um, and we weren't able to find any evidence on any title documents for any type of reported easements. Um, so we will have to be working, uh, moving forward with the applicant on things such as the access, um, environmental sensitivities of the area, there are evidence of mining history, and, and the variance process for the composting toilet. But it does create a pathway forward to have those conversations and further vet the property. Um, and the backcountry zoning was designed to consider certainly this kind of occupancy. Um, so those are just some, uh, probably some quick, but add-ons that, that staff has in comments. And happy to, uh, field any questions that you might have from the staff report or to the applicant.
Is this the first backcountry non-conforming structure variance that you've dealt with?
Correct, yes. This is our first one.
Love to be a trailblazer.
I have, I have one, and you don't?
Oh, just a minute, we're not in public comment yet, that's okay.
Do we have public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll, when you open up for, but right now, we're just doing.
Okay.
And we'll open up the comments.
Yeah, I think, um, there's, it was a very thorough report, and, um, I don't have any real, I, I appreciated what the Conservation District had to say. And I wanted to go back to one of those things here, hold on a second. Yeah, and so, one thing that I'm not clear on for fire safety is, is there a, is there a requirement for a certain amount of water to be held there?
Um, so that will be, um, there is a requirement under the site plan review process for a fire mitigation plan.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, during, through that site plan review, um, the applicant will propose a method, and then we'll review that with, uh, the fire department.
Okay.
And we do have some guidelines, um, and best practices that the fire department does furnish as part of our review.
Okay, that was my only point of clarification, was just making sure that that's part of the next process.
It is, yes.
Has the property ever been rented, short-term rented?
Not that we're, not that we're aware of.
Yeah, at least during my ownership, no.
And it would not be eligible for short-term rental. So we do not allow any short-term rental licenses to be issued in the backcountry.
Larry, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. When I was reading through that, it occurred to me that there is a rather simple way to facilitate it, getting it down to 600 feet or thereabouts. And that would be to stand a new wall about 10 or 11 foot inside from the, the front wall. And that could then be the front of the house. And what is now the front of the house could be opened up to have a more expansive porch. There'd be a covered porch there, and then he could easily comply with the 600 square foot. And that would still leave him the loft for access.
That, I, can I make?
Sure.
That would be difficult because, well, I'd have to look at it. That would be quite expensive to do.
I think it really would not, I trained for years.
The structural.
I was a general contractor for years, and that would be a rather simple modification.
I think we should let him finish what he was saying, Larry, sorry. What were you saying?
So you would just tear down the front of the cabin and expose it, and then build a wall. And so I'd have to move the toilet, I'd have to move the bedroom, and I'd have to move the solar system, um, upstairs. I would have to redo a bunch of stuff. In my opinion, I don't think that that would be a, a simple thing to do, in my opinion.
Okay.
It's a misunderstood proposal. And that was to, to leave the entire front of the cabin intact. All you would be doing would be building a wall inside and then opening up the exterior walls.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, uh, okay, well, we'll take that down for a note, and then.
Can I ask just one question?
Okay.
How do we measure square footage?
Absolutely. So it's, our gross floor area is on, on the exterior. We measure from the exterior, open loft areas are not included in our gross floor.
So it's essentially the footprint?
Yes.
So you'd have the same?
So we go with this.
Would you have the same issue if, if Mr. Glenn did what Larry was suggesting, the footprint wouldn't change?
Except for the, um, open, it, so it doesn't include, it doesn't include decks and bunkers. It doesn't include that, yes.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion or to say?
Just, uh, yeah, motion to open public hearing.
Um, do you have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Um, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Alright, so the first person we have is Robert Calder.
Hey, I'm sorry to overstep my.
That's okay.
Well, I was, the one thing I was gonna say was that he had asked about something else, and, and there's a place just down below yours. I don't really, I've got property over at St. Kevan, up at the end of St. Kevan Gulch up there, so I must have been in your circle to contact you through this meeting.
Right, you were.
So, uh, um, but there was a cabin just down the road from you.
Just, just one moment, one moment, I'm so sorry to interject, but, um, you need to make your comment to the board. Um, and, and you're certainly welcome, but we usually don't have, um, conversation back and forth. It's just, you can go ahead and provide it to the board, sorry, point of order, sorry.
I need a rulebook. So, um, there was a, he had asked, one of the board members had asked about another place, and there was a place that was just down the road. And I think it was, it must have been right about the time, if, if he says that his place was built 25 years ago, where the county nixed somebody. They had a big place built up there. And I think even some of the trusses and stuff are still on the ground up there. And, and, um, these people, I think they built the place thinking that they were gonna get a slap on the hand, and the county come in and said, "Get out of here." So they just had to leave everything and walk away from it. I think his cabin's a nice-looking thing, you know? I worry a little bit about, uh, you know, I'm an OHV, anti-OHV type guy, but there's Skeetows going up in Shingle Mill and stuff like that, does it bring more in there? That's what kinda worries me, you know? But, uh, but I don't, I, I also kinda wonder a little bit, like, how did they get away with this thing? You know, how did they get away with building that however many years ago? Amy, how are you? I haven't seen you for a long time, sorry.
I'm great.
Um, so, uh, I kinda wonder about that. And I know I, I did hear that, uh, Pinzey has, like, uh, satellite cameras or drones that they fly around now and watch for where people might be building stuff. I don't know if that's true or not, but, uh, so I kinda wonder about that. And then the other thing is, it's like, building it, um, do you plan to stay there forever? Or do you plan to sell it, or?
You can, no. You can re, we'll, we'll take comment that if you want to, as fast as you can, after we make public comment. Okay.
Okay, so that's one thing, you know, is it gonna be just one owner? Obviously, it's had several owners now, how did, how did that keep happening? You know, without, without being recognized at this point, you know? Somebody has to probably just pay cash or something for the place, I guess, you know? But, uh, um.
Okay.
I think, I think that's kind of, uh, about what I have to say, really. And I, I think it's not a bad-looking place, you know, I mean, um, but I just worry a little bit too, like, you know, look at this guy, you know, that type of thing, you know? So.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you. I would, I would mention, um, that Mr. Glenn became aware of the status of the cabin when we reached out to him, um, through code enforcement. Um, and so, um, we did discover it, and, and we do have better digital imagery now that we are cracking down on backcountry like it builds. So just, just a comment, um, you know, Bob's concern is, is yes, um, they exist and, and we are. But our first contact and our first, um, actually educating Mr. Glenn about the status was through him.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, the next person we have is Peter Day. Do you wish to speak? Is that you?
Yeah, I just had a, had a, had a comment. I, I read the file, and, um, you know, I understand the variances for dimensions, both height and, um, and aerial space. And, you know, that, that seems fine, since it was built before the backcountry zoning wanted to affect. Because my question is, and Ann alluded to it a little bit, is there's gonna be a site plan review. Is there also gonna be, um, you know, a building permit required? And, and the structure itself, you know, meet, meet? structure itself, you know, meet, meet other building codes? Obviously, I couldn't tell from the pictures, but it looks like that back deck might be, you know, several feet, four feet off the, off the ground, it might need a railing or something like that, and, you know, I don't know whether the solar or electric, you know, needs to be a spec, but, but those aren't within the scope of that variance, so I guess I wonder, you know, will, will the site plan and conformance with, with other safety building codes be, be part of this process? And I guess my recommendation is that they, you know, that they should be, that you might waive the dimensional requirements, but not, you know, health and safety requirements for the structure itself, like is the existing roof, you know, does that meet slope, snow load requirements, you know, requirements like that that are different than, than what the applicant's variance request is.
I'm happy to add some clarification.
Okay.
And so, yes, indeed, the code will, back country structure license will need to be obtained as well, which looks at the actual construction of, of the site, of the structure. So we first do the site plan review process, once that would be approved or conditionally approved, then they are eligible for back country structure license, and then we actually look at the construction elements of the structure itself, so it's a two-step process.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, yes.
Just final, so a couple things, backstory on that cabin up there, when we were looking at the cabin that purchased, the cabin, there was an existing cabin up there, someone had hauled a mobile home, placed it up there, and then built, in my opinion, a very structurally unsound and unsafe structure around the mobile home, okay? Then they left, and another contractor from Pueblo bought it, he was a house builder from Pueblo, and he decided he was going to build the structure that you see up there, adjacent to that other, and actually attached to that other property. So he took a cat and bulldozed across everybody's property and across national forests to make the road so he could get his equipment up there without any permits, any permission, all right? Then what he did is he dropped all that, the truss and everything in there for a home in Pueblo, didn't meet the structural loads, and the roof especially were two-by-fours, and didn't meet the snow loads that were up there. Then the, the housing crash hit, and he disappeared, and the property was sold and left in that condition. And so what I'm trying to do is to prevent my cabin from turning into a place like that, right? But if there's no way to get into compliance, right, then I'll turn it into, just say I'll use it in the day and not spend the night in it, and, you know what I mean, I'd need some way to get it into compliance, is what I need, and that's what I'm trying to do, and to prevent exactly what you're, what you're seeing up there. So that's the first thing. The second thing, just to let you know, I am a professional engineer in the state of Colorado, and I did a hundred-page analysis that the county has on the structural integrity of the property, or excuse me, of the cabin. So you can take a look at that, and you can evaluate it yourself, 'cause I have all my calculations in there, if you, if you're concerned.
Okay, we've got a couple of people on, online, is that Charles? Is that, that's, okay, so Charles, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? Okay, and then we have a phone number, it's not identified, it's 308-289-4912, would you like to make a comment? And please state your name also.
Sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi, my name's Mike Martenson, I live in Odala, Nebraska, and I have a, an old mining claim across Shingle Mill from Mr. Glenn, and I guess I was included in the variance mailing, and I, I really don't have any concerns about Mr. Glenn's request, I've been by his property, he actually gave me a tour several years back, and I would be, I have no reservations, you know, in regards to approving his request, you know, for several reasons, some have already been stated, so I won't take any more of your time, but that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, thank you for joining the meeting today.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for the invitation.
Okay, so Charles, I'll give you one more chance, if you'd like to make public comment, otherwise we're gonna go ahead and close it. Okay, do you have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Larry, you're seconding it?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Hello? No, it's gone. Hello?
Hi.
Yes, this is Charles Herdenorf.
I'm sorry, what was your name again? I have to put it on the record.
Oh, this is Charles Herdenorf.
Jungle last name.
Would you mind spelling the last name, please?
Sure, H-E-R-D-E-N-D-O-R-F.
Thank you.
We have a, also a 10-acre plot, it was actually a mine claim by my great-great uncle, the cabin was back in the 1870s. Anyway, we visit the area whenever we can, and we think that the cottage that is there now, as described, is appropriate for the area, and we have no, no disagreement.
Okay, thank you very much for joining the meeting today, taking the time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, so now, we talk amongst ourselves some more.
I have a question.
Yes.
And has anybody on staff confirmed the height measurement?
We asked the applicant to provide us the verification of the height, but we have not, so we did take it, height is measured from, and this area is pretty flat, so we didn't really need to, it is measured as the average of the natural current grade, private construction, but again, there's not a lot of...
I, I did take it from, this property is sloped like this, and I did take it from this point.
To the highest point on, on the structure?
Yeah, it, but if you go down the slope, it would be a little higher, it would be high, the cabin would be higher off the ground, the roof would be, because it's flat.
I guess I'm wondering whether it's exactly 24 feet that we're being asked to approve, or whether it's approximately 24 feet.
I would put approximately.
Right, I would go with approximately, and that's a good point, and probably with the square footage amounts too, I thought about that as we were talking today, and there is a bit of a discrepancy between the measurement, we're obtaining that exterior measurement from the assessor's records, and so both of those measurements might be better suited for a proximity.
And did you also speak to the two figures for the, the square footage variances?
There was a suggestion that perhaps Mr. Glenn would limit the use of the upstairs of the structure to simply storage, and that it wouldn't be considered really habitable space, it'd be more just storage space, and so the two, the variation in that amount is a variance that would grant that kind of scenario, that you would only increase the habitable space to a certain floor area, and then the upstairs would be only allowable for storage. The problem with that, that we discussed in the staff report, is how do we ensure that in perpetuity? And so that would be kind of, you know, would that actually ever really be a very manageable restriction to the floor area?
So is your recommendation that we not go that way?
Thank you.
Got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Larry, do you have any other things to add? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to, I guess, approve it, we can have further discussion after the motion's on the table and then vote, based on what the motion is.
I really have no issues with it, other than that there isn't a viable, unattainable means to reduce the square footage. I think there is, but even if, you know, even if we're 1,200 feet, it doesn't bother me that it's a pre-existing cabin and wants to get out.
Am I allowed to make a motion? I need to have them make a motion. Okay, do either of you want to read the motion that you would like to put up for vote?
I will be happy to do that, I move the board of adjustment approved, file number 24-26, property is 6663 Smuggler, variance application, property's located in section 31, township 8, township 8, Range A E West, by granting a variance from the maximum building height and gross floor area resulting in a height of approximately 24 feet, and a total gross floor area of approximately 904 square feet, and make the findings one, two, three, four.
With the following conditions, are you, are you missing a page?
Let me, let me...
Here, I've got this right here.
Okay, with the following conditions, one, the variance shall expire in three years from the date granted, if an approved or conditionally approved site plan is not approved, and a back country license is not issued in my outset, or if either of those is applied for and denied. Two, the applicant shall cause the upstairs of the dwelling to be used, no, I take that, we decided not to do that. So the second condition will be, all statements made in the application in the hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval unless they conflict with any other conditions of approval, and I find that the approval criteria set forth in section 5.21.5 of the county's development code have been met as analyzed in the staff report dated July 23, 24.
Do I have a second for you, Larry?
Yes, second.
All right, any further discussion before I ask for a vote?
I might just point out, I, I support the idea of trying to bring as many existing structures in the back country into some sort of compliance, as opposed to having them totally unregulated. I'm a little, I mean, the, the scope of these two variances are basically, in my mind, de minimis, not of any significance. I'm a little troubled by the precedent, because somebody could come in and instead of being asked for a 24-foot height, we could be looking at a 50-foot height structure or something, but every, and every application is gonna have to be looked at on its own, so I'm not gonna let that trouble me. I greatly appreciate the effort and the presentation that Mr. Glenn's made, and I'm very impressed that he's worked closely with the staff, I think that's of great importance. So with that, I'm going to support the motion, I'm here.
I agree with everything Tim said, and I think that is the spirit of this back country zoning, and, and this process that needs to happen is just to make sure that things are safe, and that even if it's not habitable year-round, just that it's safe and habitable when people are there, and my main concern is fire mitigation, so that's a part of the back country licensing, but I just, you know, that's really important to me. I do think that this is, it could set a precedent, but I also feel that there's gonna be a requirement for an engineer to look at it structurally and to make an analysis, and so I don't think things will come to us for this part if it's just like a lost cause, like there's just no way that somebody should be in there. So I think that part of the process, I assume the county will continue to have the engineering input on that, because I've definitely seen some structures that I wouldn't even walk inside of them, and I would hope that we wouldn't even consider it, based on if an engineer looked at it and, and made their report, so that's the only additional comments I have.
I would trust to have to act as a filter for those kind of situations.
Larry, did you have any additional comments?
Yeah, I would say that a property that is used and loved and enjoyed is going to stay better maintained than one that is not, and just left derelict is, is going to deteriorate rather rapidly, so I feel like it's, it's a great thing to move forward with.
Okay, with that, I will take a vote, we'll probably do a roll call here since this is an actual motion. Markham?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
And Tate says yes, also. Okay, well, that's the first step, is that the way?
Thank you. At least we know what rules we fall under now.
Yeah.
That's a big step, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward with all of that and doing your background research, appreciate the integrity in that.
Yeah, you bet, you're welcome.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.